Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, February 13, 2019. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. And with me at the dais today are council members Fletcher Ellison, Worsami Kano, Schrader Palmisano, and the Committee's Vice Chair Cunningham. Let the record reflect that we do have a forum. And I think, did I miss Councilmember Wright? My apologies, also Councilmember Wright. And Gordon. So, we have one item on our agenda today, in addition to our reports of the committees, and that is the item to adopt the city's goals as part of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. And we will begin with the staff presentation, which I understand will be given by Assistant City Coordinator Andrea Larson.
Good afternoon. I'm Andrea Larson, the Director of Strategic Management in the Coordinator's Office. I'm here to talk to you today about our recommended city goals and 2019 priorities as a part of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. I'm joined by Joy Stevens, who leads the Division of Race and Equity and is co-leading this This new Strategic and Racial Equity Action Planning process includes developing actionable plans about exactly how we will accomplish our goals, and to do so in a way that meaningfully incorporates strategic planning and racial equity action planning. This is new for us, so I want to take a step back and look at the various components of this Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan and how they fit together. So you'll see here all the components that we've been working on. The vision and values are aspirational. They tell us where we want to be when we're successful and how we want to achieve those outcomes. And then our goals and priorities set the expectations for us as a city to know where we should focus and what we will achieve. We've been working on many of these components in pieces, and so I think it's important to share that these do all fit together as a part of an integrated whole. Today, we'll be discussing the city goals and priorities specifically, which will allow staff to move forward on doing the hard work of operationalizing our goals. In developing a Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity has recommended developing goals in five key areas: data, engagement, spend, workforce, and policy. Goals in four of these areas, data, engagement, workforce, and spend, were developed last fall and were adopted by all of you in December. Today, we're talking about adopting goals, eight goals specifically, in the area of our policy work, an area which we decided to spend more time fleshing out over the course of the fall and early this spring. Currently, there's eight goals that cover a broad swath of our work, and so in addition to developing policy area goals, we will also be prioritizing the first of these goals for staff to focus on.
Excuse me, Ms. Larson, before you continue. I just want to let my colleagues know that we are using speaker management, if you want to log in, so that we can make sure we see you if you have questions or comments. My apologies, please continue.
Work on the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan started last August at a session which included multiple stakeholders, including the mayor and council, department leadership, and participation by some members of the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee. And it used a set of four criteria, which are listed here, to assess a large set of potential goal and priority areas from the com-plan. This built on prior community engagement and was the first step in deciding what we wanted to accomplish during this term. In September, mayor and council met to synthesize the wealth of information gathered at the session in August into eight policy areas in order for us to begin exploring these as goals. During the fall, staff also began defining operational goals around how we deliver our work through a diverse workforce, diverse spend, using racially disaggregated data, and engaging diverse communities. You'll see those goals listed here as well. These goals were adopted in December, and so, jumping back to the prior slide again, those were the, everything in the pie in the circle except for the orange pie slice. And today, we're talking about just those eight, those policy-specific goals. In January, just a couple weeks ago, the work of redefining the vision and values of the city has continued and will continue at a session tomorrow as well. Next, I'm going to get into the actual goal areas and the priorities that have been set, will be set.
One more interruption, Ms. Larson. I just want to make sure that the record reflects that we've been joined by council members Goodman and Council President Bender.
The draft policy goals on this page and priorities on the next page represent a joint recommendation from Mayor Frye and councilmembers. These recommendations are based on all of the prior work to date that I just listed. You'll see on this page, eight policy areas listed on the left, including public safety, housing, economic development, public services, environmental justice, the built environment and transportation, public health, and arts and culture. I will not read the goal statements associated with these specifically, I will let you read those, but these statements are intended to provide additional details about how the city, over the next four years, plans to move the work forward in these areas. In order to focus our efforts, work around housing, economic development, and public safety have been prioritized by the mayor and council. As a reminder, I'll briefly walk through how these priorities will be used. The process that we're using to operationalize these areas is called metrics of urgency. Metrics of urgency is based on the Six Sigma methodology, which uses problem-solving tools to reduce variation and defects. The process uses data to isolate what are called the vital few projects within a given process. By implementing these projects, the data indicates we will have the best opportunity of meeting the desired outcomes. Due to the data-driven nature of this structured approach, these priorities listed here point staff in the direction of which processes to explore first. At that point, data and analysis are used, to the extent available, to define where we have the biggest opportunities for impact. For that reason, this is an iterative process. We do not yet know what the data will tell us about where we need to further focus our efforts, and means that we do not come to the table with predefined solutions. This is challenging in that we cannot predict the outcome, but also exciting in ensuring that we are letting data, both quantitative and qualitative, guide our efforts so that we're able to have the greatest impact. On the next page, I'll show you some examples of what a further flushed-out version of these goal statements may look like. So you'll see some example goal statements around housing, economic development, and public safety. And you'll see the difference in this between what I just showed you is the inclusion of some of the solutions. And so, for example, on housing, you'll see that tenants, helping tenants understand and enforce their rights in order to reduce evictions. That's an example of a solution, and that is what, the type of detail that we're hoping to arrive at using data, making sure that we're finding the right solutions to focus on or the right metrics of urgency, at which point we can further operationalize what exactly that means and what we need to do as a city to accomplish that. You'll see here, next steps. The month of February will be a month of adopting many sets of the components I mentioned at the very beginning, including vision and values, and then the eight goals and the priority areas. The adoption of goals and direction to start working on these priority areas will allow us to begin our department and community engagement work as well, which we're very much looking forward to. And then, at that point, during March and April, we will start holding a series of metrics of urgency sessions, where we'll start to really lay out the process, look at the data, and operationalize where we should focus and what vital few projects we need to focus on in order to have the biggest impact. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much. I just want to first start off by saying thank you so much to staff for all the work that has gone into this. This has been quite an exhaustive process, and you all have been very flexible as we've been going through it, so I just want to first say thank you, and thank you to Joy for all the work that you all have done. I have two questions. The first is, why metrics of urgency? Why that framework?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Cunningham. We went through a thorough RFP process and assessed a number of vendors to help with this process, and the supplier who we thought could best deliver on the objectives we had outlined in our RFP, recommended using the metrics of urgency process. She had used it before. She has a great example from Ramsey County, where they use a similar process. So, we know it can work for government, as well as, you know, it grew out of corporate America, but now it can work for government, and really felt that that would help us best deliver what we're looking for, which is some really specific action steps that are driven by data in order to identify how we will move our goals forward and what we need to do to make that happen.
Thank you for that background. I appreciate the measuring aspect of it. That's first and foremost what we really have to do if we're going to be making any sort of change effort. So I reviewed some research on influencing population-level changes, and one of the things that I wanted to just address or talk about was my concern with the metric of evictions. And the reason why is because I'm concerned that it could end up incentivizing and driving the wrong behavior. So instead of evictions, we might get instead an increase in notice to vacate, which is unofficial eviction, so we could theoretically see evictions go down, but what we wouldn't see is the data of the vacate to notice going up. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that. And what I'm hearing is, like, when I see the goals, I, one of the concerns that I have is, by us zeroing in on specific measures, we're not necessarily addressing the underlying goal, which is we want folks to be stably housed, is what, you know, I would imagine where that metric comes from. And so, when we talk about the housing needs, it's really complicated, obviously, but I'm just, I wanted to share with you and my colleagues that I think that the goal should likely reflect the continuum of housing, ranging from transitional housing to homeownership that generates equity and moving people along that continuum. So, you know, evictions, so I was thinking, so they recommend finding key intervention points, like a couple of intervention points, and evictions definitely is one, but there's also homebuyer support and foreclosure prevention as other vital intervention moments for folks to be able to stay stably housed. And so, that's why I wanted to just advocate for maybe thinking about the continuum rather than one specific measure within the continuum, because ultimately, our goal is to move particularly folks of color along that continuum, from unstably housed through homeownership that generates equity, if that's what folks, if homeownership is what they would like. And so, I just wanted to share those concerns, just thinking about, again, population level influencing behavior with the wrong metric, we could actually drive the wrong behavior.
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Cunningham. I think that's really important to consider. The metrics of urgency process does require us to look at a specific process, and so that's why you'll see the level of detail that you're seeing on the priorities. We very much acknowledge that this is not the only, the only housing-related metric that we should be looking at or working on, and in focusing here, it does not mean that other work in housing, or frankly, in public safety or economic development will not continue to happen. That work will still continue to happen. This just allows us to take a really honed and focused look at one single process, and our hope is that we can look at the continuum of evictions and make sure that we are measuring all of the points at which we ultimately, you know, arrive at an eviction, and that may include notice, and it may include things after evictions. And so, our hope is that we are looking at the full process and data involved in that process.
The framework of, Madam Chair, if I may, just one last thought. The framework of the metrics of urgency is a little bit concerning, because it just seems like whenever we try to have a conversation about, like, it's a little bit too specific, and I'm just concerned about that particular specificity driving bad behavior, so.
I know that Councilmember Gordon is in queue, but I had a question for Councilmember Cunningham, and that is, I believe that notice to vacate is an informal process, so I'm not quite sure how we could get that information and/or measure it.
That's a part of my concern, is that we're measured, like, that would be, so with the conduct and license premises, one of the components in that is that if there was a notice to vacate, they have to notify the city, and that is, but that's rare. So, that's what a part of my concern is, is that we could, if we're saying official evictions are what we're going to be measuring, we could have, like, then, an unseen, like, because we can't really gather that data, we would have an issue that would also be kind of hiding in plain sight. So I'm just concerned about that piece of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Chair Jenkins. I, it's always exciting and wonderful to see this coming forward, and to think we're actually going to have a racial equity action plan, so I really appreciate that, that we get to touch it here. And I'm anxious to say, keep going, keep working. I am curious about if there's been opportunity for other people to weigh in on any of these specifics. I know that several months ago, we tried to establish a city-led steering committee to govern the plan, and I'm not sure how much they've been meeting, and I know we also have a community advisory group. So have both of those groups had an opportunity to meet and discuss the eight goals and the three priority areas yet? And if so, what did they say about them? I know, I don't, I don't believe we got a letter or anything from our Racial Equity Advisory Committee saying, "Go forth," and I don't think anybody's here from the groups either. So, that's one double question.
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon. The Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee has been kept engaged about the topic of Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. Lisa Tabor, our consultant, meets with them every month when that group meets and keeps them apprised of what's happening. The Racial Equity Steering Committee, that is primarily city staff and city staff leadership with representation from council and the mayor's office also, is being kept briefed on the status of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. We've not asked either of those bodies to weigh in specifically on the goals themselves, recognizing that the responsibility to define the goals really does rest with council and with the mayor's office, and so allowing those bodies to come to those conclusions about what the goals are. I know with the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee, they really wanted that direction to come from the city, around what those goals were going to be, but see themselves playing a very strong role going forward in actually helping to think about how we're engaging around these topics and how we're ultimately building in some sort of a reporting-back mechanism to help support communicating about progress as we're implementing the plan.
How big a problem would it be if the council asked them and perhaps others, because we're also, we've just established a housing advisory committee, which may have lots of views and expertise about evictions and what to do, or what should be, I forget what you call the biggest problem that we want to focus on, the magnitude, whatever. Anyway, the, so, it's a term of art that we're using, and I forgot.
What, the metric of urgency?
Urgency, yes. What is the most urgent issue, and, you know, some group decided evictions for housing, but, and so they may, I don't know. How big a problem would it be if the council formally asked our advisory groups to weigh in on either the goals or the three priorities that we've already named?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon, that's entirely up to the discretion of this body, how you want to engage the, either the steering committee or the advisory committee in providing feedback. Ultimately, what that does is it extends our timeline to begin doing more formal community engagement around the three policy priority areas, as well as the metric of urgency sessions tied to these policy areas. But ultimately, obviously, that, you know, that freedom does lie within this body to make that decision.
I know that, but you're saying it would delay things a little bit?
It would, yes, it would delay things.
Are we going to be developing a metric of urgency for the remaining five goals?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon, the focus of the three areas is our focus immediately. It doesn't mean that this is the entirety of our focus, obviously. We have the ability right now to identify where we're going to focus for our first draft of the Rish Equity, Strategic and Rish Equity Action Plan, with the understanding that periodically we will come back and look at other areas, both to assess where our progress is on the three areas we've identified, and then taking the opportunity to expand, perhaps adding other goal areas to that list of three that we're looking at, which could come from some of the other five areas, or a deeper look at some of the three that have already been identified.
So there's not necessarily a plan that we're trying to identify, one metric of urgency for each of the eight goals?
There's not an intentional timeline at this point, Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Gordon, to, up to cover all eight of the areas, which does, but they're being identified as goals for this council and mayor, to say that these are the areas that we want to be thinking about, and over a period of time, periodic means annually, we're talking about coming back and revisiting, making the decision as a body on how we expand that, so that ultimately, in four years, maybe we will have covered all eight of them. But also, to Andrea's earlier point, identifying specific goals within the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan does not preclude work happening in any of those other areas. Clearly, if we're talking about economic inclusion, doesn't mean that we're not still doing work in sustainability or environmental justice. If we're talking about housing, it doesn't mean we're not doing work in arts and culture.
And I know that, I mean, obviously, we are doing, this barely scratches the surface of the work that we're trying to do as a council and our committees and everything, and as a city and as an enterprise. I got that. What I was trying to think of was, maybe there would be a role for us to actually use our advisory groups in order not to delay the staff plan of moving forward on these emerging, or emergency kind of metrics. We could try to ask our, get more, take more time to identify them on the other goals, but now I understand there's not necessarily a plan that we're going to even identify any metrics of urgency for the other goals, maybe until next year or the following year, so that doesn't make much sense either. I also just wanted to note that I don't believe the metrics have gone even to a council committee yet for more deeper discussion, and we could always approve it now as a council and maybe refer it, or hope the committees would choose to touch that work or something. I would say, in terms of the eviction metric, being Chair of the Housing Committee, it would seem like it would be a better operating procedure if we were able to coordinate and bring that work together, and we looked at what are, what all, you know, what's the infrastructure to help do our housing work? Let's get all that infrastructure together and align it, so we can, we can move that disparity on the first thing that we pick, and when we do that one, another one. So, I would say whether or not the council decides to send it to a committee or refer it, I would hope to take that up in the Housing Committee, and it would only make sense that we'd also try to take it up in the other committees. And I'll just stay on my soapbox for a little bit longer. If ever we get around to deciding we want to set any metrics for the other goals, maybe to take them to some of the advisory groups and the committees, and certainly our Racial Equity Action Plan writing teams first. With that said, I'm probably prepared to let this go forward today, though, as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Next, in queue, and I guess I would just add that those bodies, I'm not sure if the Housing Advisory Committee has weighed in, but the Racial Equity Advisory Committee, as well as the Racial Equity Steering Committee, has certainly been engaged in these processes up through this point. And the Chair recognizes Council President Bender, and then next in queue is Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I think that this process is really important, but I also just want to voice that we are in 2019, so we have passed through one of our four years in office, and so, having had many, many, many hours of discussions about this process, both in the joint meetings that we've had together and one-on-one with councilmembers over the last year, I would just encourage us to recognize that at some point, we just have to decide on something and move along with the process. You know, we heard from staff at the beginning of the term that there was a desire, from staff who are tasked with implementing our goals, to be more action-focused, and so that is what led to the idea of using the metrics of urgency and trying to focus on some priorities to test out this new system of creating measurable goals, and that is a desire that I hear over and over and over and over again from our department staff, who I think honestly feel quite overwhelmed with the amount of just direction that they're getting from the council and different councilmembers. So, as has been said many times, these three goals were identified after it was not, after we weren't able to get to the seven that they had originally intended to choose, after that first long meeting that we all had together. So they regrouped and decided to take this different approach, recognizing that if, again, if we were going to use this technique this term, the work has to start at some point, because otherwise, staff will not have the time to follow the process of the metrics of urgency to complete any of the work. So, these are probably not the perfect three policy goals, written exactly perfectly for every 13 of us, but at some point, again, like, we just have to decide on something and move on. So I would just encourage councilmembers to, you know, just engage with that in mind, that, you know, I might not look at this, these goals, and think they're exactly perfect, but as a member of a 13-person body, knowing, trusting that together, this is generally the direction we want to go. If councilmembers have specific changes they want to offer, I feel like that's the point we're at right now, is not to sort of philosophically question the process, but rather offer some suggestions to help us move forward together. If there are really deep concerns about this process, I think maybe the time to have raised that was six months ago or eight months ago, and we had those one-on-one conversations to begin this. And I, you know, I just, I just want to encourage us to move along here and make sure that we're getting something out of this process.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Great, thank you. I'm still going to make sure that I ask the question. So, is, within the metrics of urgency, is it possible to have specific, like, I'm just curious about, like, how the goals are going to be framed? Is it going to be, like, is there space within the process for it to be, we want to see 500 unstably housed families or people be stably housed by the, this year or that, like a SMART goal? Is that, within the metrics of urgency, I'm just curious about, about, because, you know, folks talk about measurable, but it's like, what are we, do we have a specific goal of what we want to reach? I'm just curious about how that fits into it.
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Cunningham, the purpose, the metric of urgency process focuses on looking at, within a specific area of focus, if we're looking at evictions, for example, and reducing evictions, looking at the process that currently exists around that, understanding the process, understanding where the pain points are inside of the process and the opportunities inside of the process, in order to get us to the ultimate goal that we want to get to, if it's about eviction reduction, or housing stability, whatever that is. And the group of people who are coming together to have this conversation are the people who have the subject matter expertise, they're going to be the staff inside of our cities, who are owners of that process, they're going to be people who are our community partners and agencies, who are working with, within the same construct around housing or eviction reduction, for example, coming together to say, let's understand what the process looks like and what the opportunity is. In the midst of that conversation, we will get a much clearer sense of what the actual goal is, and what the appropriate metrics are to be able to measure success. So today, our ask of council is really about saying, giving us the direction. So today, our ask of council is really about saying, giving us the direction of where we should be focusing, understanding that when we engage people in those deeper conversations, we will get more refinement to get to specifically what you're talking about, which is a SMART goal that's data-driven, that helps us know exactly what we're doing and how we're going to measure success.
Ms. Stevens, would that process include, I guess, inclusion of some of the bodies that Councilmember Gordon spoke of?
Chair Jenkins?
The Race Equity Advisory Committee, the Steering Committee, the Housing Committee, and as we focus in on developing those SMART goals?
Chair Jenkins, right now, the Division of Race and Equity has been working with CPED Long Range Planning and Neighborhood and Community Relations to develop what we're hoping to be a rather comprehensive or robust engagement that allows people within our community and those who we are inviting and including into these conversations to be a part of helping us get to exactly what you're talking about. So certainly, there's opportunity for the advisory bodies who are within these areas to be encouraged to be part of these conversations. There are agency partners, jurisdictional partners, as well, who are invited to be part of these conversations, both for the broader community engagement work, but also more specifically for the metric of urgency sessions that we're having. The operational goals that we set initially that this body adopted back in December were primarily for our city staff and process owners to come together to work within those processes, but going forward within these areas, their own housing, economic inclusion and public safety, the expectation is that those people at the table are a much broader set of people. So yes, absolutely, is the short answer to your question.
Councilmember Canno.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of comments, and then a couple of questions, and I do want to amend this specifically around the inclusion of the word or the term immigrant or immigrants. So I'll start with my general thoughts about this. As many of us know, those of us who ran on sort of a platform of change and trying to expand the level of access for local communities to local government and resources, it's really hard to build this work when there's no foundation for it, or when the foundations are just beginning to be put together. You know, when we're trying to address issues of gentrification, there's very little enterprise-wide knowledge, expertise, or staffing that can really help operationalize some of the work that we know is needed in that front. And I say that to compare that to this process, is that I feel like this process has been difficult for some of us, because this is the first time we're doing it like this, and this is the first time we're doing it extensively in this way. When I was first elected to the council back in 2013 and started governing in 2014, our strategic planning session was nowhere near the depth and complexity that we have taken on now. So I often bring that to the, to this conversation when I'm engaging with this discussion, because I think, unfortunately, fortunately, because of our election cycles and the fact that we're, you know, in office for four years, and then we have to run for reelection and see what happens after that, it's going to be hard to have continuity to this in the way that we'd like to. And we're kind of starting from scratch, in a way. So we're really babies in how we're approaching this conversation now, and that's not to infantilize the discussion, that's just to acknowledge that we're very young in this, in the way that we're approaching governing and strategic planning for such a large enterprise right now. And so some of the tension that I feel around this process is because it's new, because we haven't done it in such an extensive way. We've clearly had a lot of staff turnover in our enterprise that has, that would have shaped these conversations and kept some of these threads going from year to year, and specifically from one election cycle to the next. So those are just acknowledging the context and the terrain of this conversation for some of us, and I appreciate the staff work that has gone into this, and clearly, we see how hard you're working. And so on that, on that kind of next step in this, for me, I'm curious about sort of two things. There was a conversation that we had as the council, maybe a couple of weeks ago, where we agreed that a smaller group of us were going to get together with maybe the consultant to further refine some of the language that we were discussing as part of our, like, vision statement and our goal statement. And I was wondering how that relates to this work that's being presented here, because I'm having a little bit of like a gap in understanding how the one leads to this, and what's been the outcome of that other conversation, because I had assumed that when that smaller group got together, that that information would then be shared with the council before we were going to vote on it, just so we could all kind of look at it, read it, and maybe try to shape it a little bit, and then bring it forward to a vote. So I don't know if someone could refresh my memory about sort of what happened to those pieces.
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Canno. Yes, the vision, that the earlier January session was to discuss the vision and values. A small group did mostly meet with some weather, challenges with weather earlier this week to work through a draft based on the conversation that happened in January, which we'll be planning to bring forward to the session that is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. The goals and priorities today are separate, but a part of this whole that I talked about at the beginning, and I appreciate your earlier comments that this is new. And so thanks to some of the council members for, you know, asking us to pause and make sure that we're taking time to revisit our vision and values. So we are doing that. It is, we are not adopting today the vision and the values that we are hoping to bring forward at the next cycle. But I do understand that this, we are moving on these components piecemeal. And so they're coming to you in pieces, and I think that that can be a little challenging, so I appreciate that. But this visual that you'll see is intended to show how those all fit together. So again, today, what we're talking about doing is adopting the goals, setting some direction on the priorities, and then in the next cycle, we'll come back and bring forward a vision and values.
Would it be possible to get that statement emailed out to people before the meeting tomorrow? It's kind of one of my pet peeves, like, I don't like walking into a meeting and being like, here's the statement, we're deciding it now, but it would be nice if we could read it either overnight tonight or early tomorrow morning. I don't know if it's been emailed out, but it would be great. Was it emailed out, is my question?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Canno. We will be sharing the agenda and can share the current draft after this meeting.
Okay. And then my other comment, and then...
And I want to emphasize, it's a draft statement, that we will all have an opportunity to provide input in at our planned session for tomorrow. And I, my apologies, Councilmember Canno.
So my other thing was going to be, oh, so community engagement. I see a lot of language in here about community engagement, and I'll just share with my colleagues now, is that I've tried to do more community engagement through our committee, our Public Safety Committee, and every time I try to tackle a new community engagement project with it, I'm faced with the question of, like, where's the budget? So I think I, I would like to encourage us to really connect these discussions about broader and greater community engagement with a serious discussion about what it takes to get that done. And I know that all of us have faced similar questions around this, whether it's through development projects, or through city-driven projects, or through, for example, just wanting to open up our committee to more community-led participation, and not having all of our meetings here, but having them off-site, and all of the resources that it takes to actually kind of bring City Hall out into the community. I would like to just put this on everyone's radar, is that if we're going to shift our governance practices in that way, it would be helpful for some of us to, I guess, get together and figure that out, because it's something that, like, I'm facing as a barrier oftentimes, is that, you know, I kind of lean on Casey to be like, so Casey, how can we have a community meeting now for public safety on this issue? And it's like, well, where are we going to pay for, where's the money going to come from to pay for space, to pay for translators, to pay for promoting the event? And so there's just a host of things that go into that machinery of community engagement, and I want to make sure to remind all of us to really dive into the deepness of that discussion. And so my last comment really is more about understanding how we're consistently using the term either BIPOC or POCII. And so in this, I see that we're using the term Black Indigenous People of Color, and I would say that we either need to add immigrant communities into that, or revert to the other terminology that we were using, which is People of Color Indigenous and Immigrant Communities. So we just need to be, like, consistent with either we're choosing this language, or we're choosing the other one, but like, you know, being really clear about when and how the organization or the institution engages that terminology, and making sure that if we're going to use it, that we always include the immigrant community as well. That's it.
Councilmember Gordon.
So the council president kind of offered up the idea of trying to amend some of the language, and I had a couple of ideas, and I'm not sure how much my colleagues want to drag this out for some potential changes. I'll talk about what the three changes are, and maybe we can move some if it seems like they're pretty simple. This is about the draft goals. I think if these are actually the draft goals that we're going to approve, that are going to help us operate, it's important that we look at them pretty carefully. Based on the discussion about the housing so far, I thought it might be useful for us to include another qualifier as to the kind of housing we want to eliminate disparities about and provide equitable access to, mostly from Councilmember Cunningham, but I thought we could add the word "stable." So it says, "The city prioritizes equitable access to safe, stable, and affordable housing to eliminate racial disparities in housing." And I thought that might be helpful. When I looked at the public service one, I also, I'm just foreshadowing my three that I want to change. I think that we actually want to prioritize reliable and equitable access to all of our public services. I'm not quite sure what core meant there, to core public services, like, some of the public services we provide, we don't want reliable, equitable access. So I thought we could maybe change it to say, "The city prioritizes reliable and equitable access to high-quality public services that work well for everyone." Might be too many words, I don't know. Then the also on the environmental justice issue, I really appreciate that we have something on there, and we mentioned climate change. I'm just worried that we missed a priority about some of the immediate things we want to do in terms of the clean air, water, and soil, and the work that we want to do kind of in the more immediate level. I know we say sustainable practices, and I guess I don't actually have amendment written for that exactly. I also really appreciate that the public health one, zero is right in on youth development, but it also makes me wonder about, does that capture everything that we really want to prioritize about public health, which is also where the clean air and clean water could go as well, to broaden public health a little bit? So that's, I guess, why I was in limbo about that. But seeing how gung-ho everybody appears through their nonverbal gestures, how about if I try to then amend the housing one to add the word "stable" after "safe"? Could we entertain that as a motion? So now, is everybody clear on what it is? You say it's stable and affordable housing, instead of just safe and affordable? Okay.
So are you offering that as an amendment?
Yes.
And Kirk, do we need to vote on that amendment now? So we have an amendment from Councilmember Gordon to change the language in the housing goal to reflect, "The city prioritizes equitable access to safe, stable, and affordable housing to eliminate racial disparities in housing." All those in favor of adopting that amendment?
Discussion?
Discussion on that item? Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, and just like to add the word "accessible" to the "safe, stable, and affordable housing." Some of the, all of us are definitely able, I think it'd be powerful to put that in there as well, if the author is amenable.
I'm not quite sure I understand, Councilmember...
So instead, read, "The city prioritizes equitable access to safe, stable, accessible, and affordable housing to eliminate racial disparities in housing."
It already says access.
Accessible, sorry. I'm not enunciating correctly. All of us are differently abled, and a lot of, one of the barriers to housing is finding things that have, it's having wide enough doors, making sure things are on the first floor, a lot of those things are, sometimes we'll have affordable, safe, stable housing that isn't accessible at all. Does that make more sense?
It seems like the language, though, maybe ADA accessible, then, if we...
I'd rather not be that specific, I'd rather be more open to that, than have that be more, a little bit, I'd like the leeway for the community to have that definition. As it stands in the wording, I don't see us getting more defined about what affordable means, so I feel like this fits in that context. But I'm, well, that all depends on the author of the amendment, if he's open to suggestions.
Councilmember Gordon, are you amenable to these additions?
I think that I could handle that. I guess I have the same pet peeve in terms of the language. We just said access, I'm going to say accessible, but I get the distinction, and the sentence won't work if we don't say equitable access to, sorry for hitting the microphone. So I can, we can always vote on it separately, but I could consider it a friendly amendment, unless it was going to end up dooming my amendment, and I certainly don't want to do that, so.
I'm going to ask the clerk to read the amendment as amended by Councilmember Schrader.
Madam Chair, my understanding is that it would read, "The city prioritizes equitable access to safe, stable, accessible, and affordable housing to eliminate racial disparities in housing."
And is there any more discussion on that amendment? Say none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That amendment carries. And if there is no further discussion...
Yeah, it's, there we go.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Canno's component. I wanted to, I don't know if this needs to be a motion, but so I'll just go ahead and try, but I would like to see consistent language with POCII, so People of Color Indigenous and Immigrant. I just think it's really, I just want to emphasize and stand in solidarity that in this iteration of fascism, that immigrants and refugees are being targeted, so we have to make sure we are as intentional about being inclusive of them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham, and I was going to include that in my motion, so very well stated. And so with that, I will move approval of item one with the amendment from Councilmember Gordon, as well as the inclusion of the language indicating immigrant communities as stated by Councilmembers Canno and Cunningham. All those in favor, well, is there any discussion on that item? Any further discussion? Say none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. And before we move on to our committee reports, I want to personally thank our staff from the coordinator's office, Ms. Larson, and Ms. Joyce Stevens, and all of the staff that have been working so diligently and so hard over the past year to bring us to this point, and recognizing that we still have work to do. But it has been, I think, a very thoughtful process to date, and I think it's exciting that we are embedding race equity goals in our strategic plan for the city. It's a milestone that I know... It's a milestone that I know many of us have been, been waiting for and hoping for, for a very long time. And so congratulations to this body for approving this today, as well as to the staff for, for guiding us through this process. So thank you. And with that, we will now receive reports from our standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council in our regular meeting this coming Friday, and we will begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice President, I have our agenda, and then I have a unanimous consent issue I want to bring up after I report on our agenda. There are nine items on the agenda for approval on Friday. Item one is a liquor license with Sunday sales. Item two are the regular liquor license approvals, and three are the renewals. Item four are the gambling license renewals. Item five are the business licensing op, our business license operating conditions for the bottle house wine and spirits. Items six and seven are rental license conditions for reinstatements. Item eight is a land sale closing extension. And item number nine is our Great Streets Facade Improvement Program. You'll see there are eight different organizations receiving grants through our facade improvement program. I'll note that there are a number of, almost a dozen outstanding grants also from the previous cycle. So if you don't see an organization in your ward on this list, it might be that they're working on their two-year plan in the off-cycle. I'll note that item number 10 is the Upper Harbor Terminal Concept Plan, and we do intend on bringing that forward in the next cycle, which would be on Tuesday. Now, Madam Chair, I do want to note that I will be bringing forward tomorrow an ordinance changed, changing essentially the definition of interest in a rental dwelling license or a provisional license. The language will be circulated by the clerk. This is language that needs unanimous consent for approval on Friday that will go immediately to the EDRS Committee in the next cycle. Should you have any questions about why we've chosen to do this, this way, feel free to talk to me. Members of the committee will get a briefing on this as well. It has to do with how we define interest in a property. So for example, is, do you have an interest in the property if you have a contract for deed? Do you have an interest in the property if you have a securitized interest? Do you have an interest in the property if you're accepting rent, or if someone who's related to you is accepting rent? There are a variety of ways we would like to define, further clarify how we define interest in a property, and there is sometimes time sensitivity to this definition. And I will defer yield to Susan Siegel if she has anything else she wants to add.
Madam Chair, and Councilmember Goodman, no, that's a good summary. Thank you.
I'm happy to answer questions on any of the items.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Saying none, we will move to our next committee report, the Housing and Policy, Housing Policy and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President Jenkins. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is coming forward with four items on Friday for consideration. The first is a series of land sales having to do with the, all the land sales from the Minneapolis Homes Development Assistant Funds. There's quite a few listed there, people can check out the agenda. The second item is approving up to $300,000 in funding for our outreach services. This is with St. Stephen's Human Services again, for homeless outreach services in 2019, and that can be renewable for up to an additional four years. The third item is authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Home Ownership Center to provide enhanced administrative and oversight of financial wellness services. And the fourth item is ratifying approval of a funding agreement with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for the Stable Homes, Stable Schools Initiative. Happy to stand for any questions. That last one was also referred, well, more than the last one, to the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Saying none, we will move to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee chaired by Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee is bringing forward two items for consideration on Friday. The first is the passage of the Residential Energy Disclosure Ordinance, and the second is appointments, or reappointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging Appointments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Uh, Councilmember Gordon.
It's not a question, but I did want to alert folks that there'll be one small technical amendment to the Residential Energy Disclosure Ordinance. This has to do with the truth in sale of housing. At the committee, we put in some amendments. I, I moved one amendment that would have allowed someone selling their home to present an invoice about insulation that was provided to, in lieu of using some other method, including drilling a hole. Upon reflection, I thought that was too specific, talked with staff, and we feel the requirement should just be any documentation that can prove that the work's been done is fine, they don't have to find an invoice necessarily. So I'll make sure everybody has a chance to see that. I consider it a technical amendment, it doesn't really change the idea. And I did talk to some of my colleagues who were in, who were pushing that idea forward, and they seem to think it's a fine solution as well. Back, back and forwarded to you all now.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Any questions? Saying none, we will move to our next committee report. The Transportation Public Works Committee chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee forwards nine items. We have item one, which is the 2019 Concrete Streets Rehabilitation Program. We have item two and three are contract amendments. Items four and five are agreements with our partners at PINDOT and the U of M, as is six and seven with the U of M, and also Northern, Burlington's Northern Santa Fe to do activities of the committee or the department. Item eight is the bid for the Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project Phase Two, and item nine are the special service district appointments, 20 of which are listed. Madam Vice President, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chair Reich. Are there any questions? Saying none, we will hear from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee chaired by Councilmember Conno. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on their toes.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. We, the committee, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee does not have any action items to forward. However, did want to mention that we had a discussion about the traffic stops data, and in the future, we will be bringing back the Women in Blue documentary conversation, so that'll be happening on March 6th, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Conno. Are there any questions? Saying none, we will hear the Ways and Med, Ways and Means Committee report given by its chair, Councilmember Worsame.
I thank you, Madam Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee brings forth 10 items for the, for the full council's consideration. Item number one, two, three, and four are legal settlements. Item number five is a contract amendment with Ann Gottfried for Public Art Coordination. Item number six is an agreement with artists for the Luminous Ceiling Project for the Public Service Building. Item number seven is a contract with V Graceful Bakery and Catering for food and beverage services at the Public Service Building. Item number eight is a request or proposal for elevators, also at the Public Service Building Project. Item number nine is a bid for Public Service Building Project Roofing. And item number 10 is the 2018 Budget Closing Adjustments, and I will be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Worsame. Are there any questions? Councilmember Gordon.
That's from before.
Oh, my apologies. Are there any questions?
I can't remove it either.
Saying none, our next committee report is the Zoning and Planning Committee given by Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward six items for approval. The first is the denial of a demolition of the property at 215 Ninth Street South. The second is the denial of a variance and site plan review for the property at 901 Winter Street Northeast. The third is the approval of the rezoning at the same property. The fourth is the approval of the reappointment of Marilyn Sundberg to the Heritage Preservation Commission. The fifth is the approval of a street vacation for a portion of 10th Avenue Northeast between Sibley Street Northeast and the Mississippi River. And the sixth is the approval of a commemorative street name addition on Plymouth Avenue North between Penn Avenue North and Queen Avenue North. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Schrader. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Saying no questions, our next committee report is the Audit Committee given by Chair, its chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There's nothing from our independent audit committee that's being forwarded to council at this time, but I did want to take an opportunity to share with you all some of the work that Audit has done this time around. We received two full audit reports and two helpful consults this round, and when I say "us," I mean myself and Councilmember Schrader, and Councilmember Worsame, who sit as part of that committee. One is a full audit of the AEG Target Center contract and its relationship. As you, as most of us here would remember, we had to consider an investment in Target Center a couple of years ago, and we're curious to see if that investment has been worthwhile. So I think that overall, it's too soon to tell, but there were certainly some improvements and suggestions as to how we better manage this relationship going forward. The second was a human resources consult, that's our continued efforts on how we can be diligent and consistent across the enterprise on managing separations from the city. The third was with our partners, the Park Board, and doing a body worn camera compliance readiness in, so that they are ready for their first formal body worn camera audit when that comes time. And the fourth audit was when we had to receive enclosed session, and that's from our PIMS Management System, that's our Police Information Management System, and it was about IT items, and we will be unredacting more of that for the public-facing view once those audit items get remediated. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm also proud to announce that the mayor has reappointed Mr. David Fisher to our independent audit committee. Mr. David Fisher is the head of a department at the University of Minnesota Law School, and has been serving with us for one term previous. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Saying none, we will now hear from Councilmember Bender with the Executive Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have two items from the Executive Committee. The first is a civil service commission appointment, and the second is, which would be referred to Ways and Means for the public hearing, and the second is approving a collective bargaining agreement with our electricians unit. It's retroactive because this one is behind, so staff is working to sit down with them for negotiations of their future contracts.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Saying none, that commences our business for this committee today, and we are now adjourned. I do want to announce that we have a intergovernmental relations committee, and we will take a 10-minute break to give the staff a chance to resituate the dais for our upcoming committee.